Good evening, everyone. We'd like to call our Monday, June 28th Fayetteville City Council Meeting to Order. Glad to have people in the chambers for a change. So, welcome, everyone, and welcome those who are joining us remotely. At this time, we will go to item 2.0 is the invocation. Actually, we would please stand for the prayer immediately following if we could repeat in unison the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk, do we have any ministers that were on for prayer purposes?
Well, we have enough on the dais with us. So, we'll get Reverend Chris Davis, your mind, sir?
Always. Let us pray. Gracious Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us, for another opportunity to come together to do the business of the people. We pray that you would bless us, that you would indize us with knowledge, wisdom, and understanding, that you would give us the spirit of unity, and give us the ability to push us forward as a community. God, we thank you for this great nation that we're part of, for every state leader, for every national leader, for every local leader, continue to guide us and give us providence as we strive to do what's best for us, for those who we serve, for those in this nation. God, right now, and especially where we thank you for those who are on the other side of the world defending this nation and fighting for freedom all around the globe. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Congratulations, here to the flag, United States of America, and to your Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. At this time, the announcements, 4.0 announcements in recognition. We'll start off with Mr. Scott Bullard, following which we'll have some presentations and acknowledgements. Mr. Bullard, how are you?
Good, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Council, and Fayetteville. Had somebody in the audience asked me, they're here just for the numbers. So, the number today is 470. That's how many days we are under this state of emergency. There's a lot of banter back and forth about improvement. Some of the numbers are improving. But as we look at this hour tonight, one of our neighboring counties to the east there, Bladen, went from orange in the alert system to red. They're having a struggle. You're going to see these struggles as we go forward because vaccination is the key to at least managing the problem, maybe not solving all the problems. But it makes us mindful. It worries some of us that we're ranked fifth among the seven counties that includes us in terms of vaccinations. I know there's been some struggle over the numbers and trying to get them charted, and needing DOD information, and VA information, and so forth. But since we don't have that, we just pick up with what we have and go on, and we continue. And I press everyone tonight and tell everybody you know, continue to press for vaccinations. In two days, the clinic will close at Crown Center. So, instead of having a mass clinic, then there'll be smaller mini-clinics that will be done. Keeping in mind that CVS is still in the game, Walgreens is in the game, and in all cases, there are private providers now popping up throughout our community. It could be that your family doctor is actually participating now and has vaccine. So, there can be no excuses. It's available. It's just a matter of doing it.
Thanks, sir. I did see some statistics to say that only 27% in Cumberland County are vaccinated, meaning 73% are not compared to our peer counties that who are at 58 and 60%. So, what's the latest on the efforts? Well, you may not know, but have you heard anything about any specific efforts to help encourage that?
Aside from all the fanfare recently over the lottery drawing, and then the scholarships and so forth, I think that's the primary incentive, if you will. Now, there are gift cards that are being distributed, not only for the one receiving the shot, but if someone would drive you to get the shot, then they're eligible as well. So, it comes down to, take a friend. Even if you've already had it, you can still get, I believe it's a $25 cash card.
Yeah. All right. Council, any questions for Mr. Bullard? 400 in how many days?
470.
All right. So...
The governor missed his mark by 20% is what it's going to look like of where he wanted us to be. But we'll just keep clawing at it. That's all we can do.
All right. Need vaccinations, you all. That's the way we get there. So, thank you, Mr. Bullard. Looking forward to another briefing in another time. So, thank you so much. At this time, have a special presentation that Mayor Pro Tem, you...
I'm going to read it.
You'll read it? Okay. If we can ask Mr. and Mrs. Huff, if you can meet me at the podium, please?
And Ms. Pennick, if she's in the audience. So, as the mayor is going down to greet the Huff's, we personally wanted to thank the Huff's and Ms. Pennick for donating the trolleys that are going to be downtown, that are going to be taking people back and forth. Just what great steward you are of our city. So, I'm going to go ahead and read the certificate and let the Huff's have their say. Thank you. "In recognition of your exploratory efforts and accomplishments, which have been a great benefit to the community, your community spirit and interest have helped make our city a better place to live, play, and recreate." Thank you for your certificate of appreciation. Thank you. So, if you would like to tell us a little bit about the trolleys?
I'll keep it short. When, as soon as Bianca came with the downtown Cool Spring, she, I met her, talked to her, and she said one of the things they really wanted to accomplish was to get some trolleys, a trolley. And I told her that I'd like to help. Then COVID happened, and then she came back after soon as she, you know, we kind of opened back up, and we talked about trolley. We wanted to get an electric trolley that really didn't even have sides to it. You could just hop on and hop off. Problem with it is it only ran for six hours, and then it had to charge for eight hours. And it couldn't go to Methodist University, for example, or it couldn't go to Fayetteville State University, or it couldn't go to the Botanical Garden with the frequency that really I thought we needed to do it. So, we opted for diesel, and we got two diesel trolleys for the cost of the one electric trolley. And so, that will be able to accomplish the goals of being more visible in town and helping, you know, I'd like to see the college kids downtown. And they'll be, you know, they'll be able to go up, up Haimout to the Theater, or to the Civil Roy History and Reconstruction Center, or down to the Botanical Garden. So, with the diesels, they're a lot more practical. They are used, but they're in real good shape, and we're just excited about seeing it happen real soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Huff, before you leave, would you like to talk about the Botanical Gardens some, too? Of what some great things are going out there that you have been so instrumental in?
Yeah. Lyn, they came to us about 18 months ago and said they were trying to retire the debt on the orangery, which is, to me, the most significant magnificent room in the whole city of Fayetteville. And we agreed, if they'd give us some time, we would help with that. And last Thursday night, they were able to burn the mortgages and name the orangery, the Ralph and Linda Huff Orangery. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. And it... Well, we appreciate everything, and just wanted to make sure that, you know, everybody knows that our greatest asset in Fayetteville is our people. So, thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Huff, for your generosity and commitment to the community. This time, we'll move to...
Excuse me. I pushed my button for...
I'm not finished yet. I'm coming. I have it. So, Mayor Pro Tem, I will read the certification, the certificate for Ms. Pennick, and we'll make sure the staff gets this to her. This is presented to Ms. Susan Pennick in recognition for exemplary efforts and accomplishments, which have been a great benefit to this community. Your community spirit and interest have helped make the city a better place to live, work, and play, and recreate. And so, Ms. Pennick, thank you in your absence, and we'll make sure that you receive your certificate as well. At this time, I'll go to Councilmember Ingram, and then here.
Thank you. To dovetail off of what Mayor Pro Tem Jensen stated as recognizing our greatest asset is our people, I want to give thanks to some individuals who was in our last meeting. But over the past two weeks, citizens in this city were proudly able to create safe spaces to celebrate their culture and heritage from Juneteenth weekend to Pride Weekend, where this city is truly beginning to show equity and equality in this city. And over the past two weeks, I feel confident in saying that, and very proud to say that this city is changing in a very proud way. And lastly, just over the past two weeks, love always win, and I think that's something we all should do our best to remember in every day. And so, I want to send a thank you to Kia Anthony of Circa 1865, Nathan of Blue Moon Cafe, Bianca, Shanti, and Lauren with Cool Spring Downtown District, and Joshua, AKA Ms. Hannah, at J. Co. Beauty Salon. Thank you guys so much for being able to create these safe spaces for our citizens to celebrate their culture and heritage.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman here.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for this opportunity to recognize one of our fallen citizens. On last Sunday, we lost Mr. Charles James Thomas. They have a stable, I like to call it a historical business in the Bonny Doon area called Chains Seafood. I have been going there for at least 25 years. They have been in business over 50 years, and we lost him and laid him to rest today. But I just wanted to recognize them because he and his wife's son were a, still are, a strong viable business giant in our community. And that's my hope and prayer, that we will still continue to support that business, Chain Seafood. They're going to be closed just for a few weeks, you know, kind of regroup, get their heads, their hearts a little stronger to come back. But I just wanted to salute them because just they have just been such a stable investment within our community. And I love them. They are personal friends. And thank you, Mayor and Council, for just a moment, just to recognize one of our giant business owners in the city of Fayetteville.
Thank you, sir. Certainly, our condolences to the family. At this time, we'll move to item 5.0, City Manager's Report.
Yes, sir. I promise this will be brief. Randy, if you could come forward briefly, we actually have some good news. Wanted him to share very briefly with the council. Thank you, Mr. Manager. It is a lot of pleasure. I enjoy bringing money to the city of Fayetteville, particularly the grant money that we get. And last Friday, about 1:00, I got an email saying, "Things are looking good." I got on a call with FTA, and they congratulated me that we had been one of the recipients of a low-no emissions grant for electric buses. And if you all remember, back in March, you all approved us filing that grant. And so, I was really pleased that we did get that. We're one of, there were 46, or 49 projects awarded in 46 states. We're the only one in North Carolina. And again, this is three buses, and the charging infrastructure that goes with it, and some training for our employees. And you have an item on your consent item that has two more electric buses. So, we will have five of those once these get here. And those are going to start replacing diesel buses, and over time, we'll be transitioning through that. And it'll take many years. But it is very, very, very nice to get those awarded. And I just want to thank you for your support with your resolution and everything else. Thank you. That's all.
Great news. Five new electric buses on the way. Good job. Item 6.0 is the approval of the agenda, Councilman Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I moved to approve the agenda with the adding of two items, the consent item, the Smith Settlement Agreement, item 7.027. And the other item will be under the Other Businesses, which is 11.05. This item is the Smith, Mabel Smith Park Improvement item.
Thank you, sir. All right. As a motion by Councilmember Wright to approve the agenda with the modifications as mentioned, is there a second? Second by Councilmember Ingram. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. All right. Councilmember Ingram? Madam Clerk, that's unanimous by those present. Okay. Councilmember Banks, you intended, okay. All right. All right. Motion carries. Item 7.0 is the Consent Agenda, Councilman Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion that we approved the Consent Agenda.
All right. It's a motion by Councilman Davis to approve Consent. There's a second by Councilmember here. Any discussion in the mo... Okay.
Mayor, I had wanted to pull item 7.026 into the Consent Agenda.
All right. So, Councilman Davis, so can you modify your motion to reflect the removal?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, gladly. I make a motion that we approve the Consent Agenda while pulling item 7.06 for additional discussion.
7.6 or 7.026?
7.026 for additional discussion.
All right. And Councilman here, are you still the second on that?
Yes, sir.
All right. There's a motion to approve the agenda with the exception of item 7.026. There's a second by Councilmember here. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, that's 8-0. Motion carries. All right. Item 7.026, Councilmember Kinston.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, I wanted to pull this particular item because we were originally due to start on July 1st, and we are going to be discussing tonight to move the start date to August 1st. But just for informational purposes, I just wanted to update the citizens on what's happening, some expectations, and then also how they can assist in the transition.
And this is reference to recycling?
Yes, this is for the recycling, for the waste management. Thank you.
Good evening, Council Manager. We don't really have a presentation today, but we're just coming to talk, to discuss the recycling, and our ask of moving, changing the Waste Management Contract from starting biweekly recycling from July 1st to August 1st. And this basically based, production issues, material issues, and all that stuff caused a delay in us getting, receiving the carts. So, what we had to do, well, there was different options that we had, but the best option was to just delay the start of biweekly recycling. And by doing that, that just gets rid of a lot of the other confusion that would have ensued by us starting July 1st. So, that was just our ask today.
Thank you. Do we have a question, Councilman here?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the concerns that come up quite often, and maybe we can have some clarity on it for our residents, is the pickup of the smaller cans that are out there now. We've shot out so much different information, leave it, just leave it out there, or continue to bring it out on the day that is your time and your zip code. Could you give us some clarity on the smaller rollout and what the citizens need to know?
Yes, we recommend that...
As far as, you know, it being collected?
Yes, sir. We recommend that residents put it out on their recycle day. We have trucks going through right now for all the routes that have already been delivered to. So, we're doing that by route. And I believe that's the biggest confusion in the whole thing, is that it's being done by route, where residents feel like, well, if it's Monday, they should just pick it up. But we can only do things by routes, and we have 15 routes. So, we can't do all 15 in one day. So, we're asking that the residents put out the carts, and we're going around picking them up. We're trying to do at least two or three routes a day, and we're going to pick them up. And we're just going to continue to do this all through the month of July to get these carts up from in front of the residents' homes.
If the contractor or the city, whoever it is, goes through, they've said they have done a neighborhood...
Yes, sir.
But they missed some, and that can happen.
Yes.
What's going to be the reset for that?
If a contractor misses a home, and that has happened since we started, the residents have called the call center, we recognize it, we bring a cart to them, and then we put that cart number with the cart company's number so that we can verify and make sure that that is accounted for.
And we're also going to be asking those that have the, well, I don't know, I'm just going to throw it out there. Some of our residents have the backyard pickup.
Yes, sir.
How is, explain how that works.
If they had backyard pickup before, they'll continue to have backyard pickup.
No, I mean, as far as the carts go. I mean, getting the cans.
You mean, how are they, how are we getting them to the backyard?
Yeah, how, no. If, if, if the backyard pickup are going in the rear yard, they're going to go in the rear yard of those, those residents to get their cart also? That's what I'm asking.
Oh, no. For the backyard pickup, if, because of the company, they only are dropping them at the curb. If there's an issue, I have a guy that's specifically dealing with the recycling. If there's an issue, you just call the call center, and he goes and swaps them out. Also, we have another guy that picks up the backyards. If he sees them, he'll bring them in back and forth for them also.
Well done. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Kinston?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, Councilmember here addressed my other questions. So, I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you for the update, sir. We look forward to getting these carts out. Just to recap, citizens who are listening, we will not change your pickup schedule until all the carts are in place.
Yes, sir.
So, don't worry about that. So, we're working hard to do it. And you think August 1st it'll...
August 1st, we should be a go.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update.
You're welcome, sir.
Item 8.0 is the Legislative Hearings, 8.01.
Mayor, we need a vote on that item.
Oh, on the cart?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Got pulled. I'm sorry. Keep me straight, madam. All right. Councilmember Kinston, that's your deal. Would you like to make a motion for 7.026?
Yes, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to approve 7.26 Waste Management Biweekly Recycling Start Amendment to August the 1st with the up-down vote.
All right. It's a motion by Councilmember Kinston. There's a second by Councilmember Ingram. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for action. Councilmember Banks McGloffe? Your button's stuck. Uh-oh. We better get that fixed tonight. All right. It's on. Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
All right. Now, item 8.0. Juan Valdez, better known as Mr. Tars Freeman, how you doing?
Greetings, Mayor, City Council, Tars Freeman, Planning Zoning Division Manager. Give me one quick second here. Okay. Tonight's item is TA 21005. This request was made by the City Council. It's a request regarding the proposed text amendment to Article 30 of the Unified Development Ordinance regarding recycling drop-off centers, or AKA donation boxes. The planning commissioner heard this request last month, and they recommended Option 4, which is to establish a city standard, city to the city of Wilmington, Winston-Salem, excuse me, where they are allowed, but then no longer permitted, when boxes are not kept in good, clean order, and prohibited, and prohibit third-party vendors from operating within the city, and to all be removed at a designated time. Recycling drop-off centers is a small collection facility where recyclable materials are purchased or accepted from the public. Typically, these uses include recycling stations, thrift shops, thrift store collection trucks, and other items. There are several issues regarding, there are several issues regarding these drop-off boxes. One is the donation boxes are at capacity, and the items are dropped off outside of the designated box. Two, the boxes are not secure and easily accessible to the public. Three, the items are pulled out of the boxes and not adequately replaced into the bin, and/or four, donation boxes are not utilized for the intended recycling uses. Under our current code, recycling drop-off boxes are allowed in multiple land use districts. They're allowed in office and institutional, neighborhood commercial, limited commercial, community commercial, mixed-use downtown, limited industrial, and heavy industrial. Now, they also allowed as a special use permit in some residential zoning classifications, such as F6, single-family, and mixed-residential 5, as well as the manufactured home districts. Now, staff had reviewed this request once it was brought up several months ago by City Council. So, we looked at some variable viable options for you all. One is what we consider our nuclear option, which is to prohibit recycling drop-off centers in all applicable zoning districts. Therefore, we're saying that any business would not be able to allow to have any... Therefore, we're saying that any business would not be able to allow to have any drop-off boxes or donation boxes on their property within the city. And that goes for any profit, nonprofit organization, churches, anyone that wants to do that, it would be prohibited. Option two, it adds the contact information to the bins, the bins owner on the container. It also adds responsibilities and violations to the bin owner and/or property owner. So as you can see here in four, you have the name and telephone number of the party, which, from the donation boxes. Then you have some responsibilities and violations. Both sponsoring organizations responsible for the donation containers and/or owner of the property where it's located shall be subject to the enforcement provisions contained in Article thirty-eight enforcement. Now, what we currently do, if we have violations for drop-off boxes, we contact the property owner, and they're cited for illegal dumping. So option two actually addresses some of those concerns. Also, if the sponsor organization responsible for the donation container, if they are cited two times in a six-month time period, they have to remove the boxes for a period up to two years. Now, option three prohibits third-party vendors from operating within the city and all to be removed at the designated timeframe. A lot, majority of the costs that we receive for donation boxes are because of third-party vendors. It's not the property owner. It is the third-party vendors. Places like Cypher's Army, they accept indoor donations. It's very rare that you see a business that have a donation box that they have some type of violation. Option three will actually prohibit these third-party vendors from going on properties that they do not own and having a donation box. Now, option four is a combination of three, two and three. That is the Planning Commission's recommendation. This right here will establish a new standard that will, that are allowed but no longer permitted when the boxes are not kept in good, clean order. So therefore, it will prohibit the third-party vendors from operating, and it will also prohibit the vendors from operating within the city. Once again, these are the options before the City Council today, and staff will answer any questions that you may have.
And Mr. Freeman, Mr. Councilman Hare?
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. I brought this item, but we all, we all see it everywhere. Could you go back to those objectives or those findings or that you just had on the screen?
These options?
Can you go back to the, what are we calling them?
Issues?
The one through six? What you just got finished?
Right, options, yes.
The options? Now, I, I do like number four, but let me understand, is there a way that one through five could be accepted, or it has to be one, two, three, four, or five?
You all can choose whatever options that you see fit, sir.
But also, Mayor and Council, this is for public hearing, so perhaps we should open, right, and then ask those questions.
I'm sorry, we'll proceed from there. Okay, thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Councilmember Kinston?
I'll wait until after the public hearing, sir. Thank you.
All right. All right, Mr. Freeman, with that, we'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, any speakers?
No, sir.
All right, that will close the public hearing. Councilmember Kinston?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I do have one question, just- Mine isn't the motion, mine's a question.
Yeah, okay, I got you, Councilman Hare. I'm coming, coming right to you.
Yes, sir.
We'll go ladies first.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. So I do have one question. If this is passed tonight, what is the transitional period for any boxes that are currently in place?
For which items, madam, for which option?
Let's say if we choose option four.
Okay, and staff did not actually put a date on when the bins have to be removed, so we will look for direction from City Council for that.
Okay, thank you.
Because we do, definitely do want to give them ample amount of time to have those removed. But remember, these donation boxes are not permanent structures. They can easily be picked up and removed from the sites.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Hare?
Okay, yes, Mayor, thank you. As I was saying, I I like and probably prefer item four that also institutes option two and option three. But what my question was earlier, are we allowed to, Mr. Attorney, to choose all of those? Or, or, well, if two and three? Okay, I'm under, I got it.
Because option one actually prohibits them altogether.
I, I got it, I got it, okay. I'm, I'm clear now. Then, Mayor, I would like to move for, to make a motion if there are no more discussion. Yes, sir, I will like to make a motion that we accept option four to approve a combination of options two and three to establish a new city standard similar to the city of Winston-Salem, where they are allowed but then no longer permitted when boxes are not kept in good, clean order and prohibit a third-party vendors from operating within the city and, and all to be removed after a designated time.
There's a, there's a motion by Councilmember Hare, there's a second by Councilmember Wright, discussion. Councilman Hare or staff, what are the parameters around the time? If this motion passes and it becomes law, what's the effective dates that we're proposing?
From the date, if it is approved tonight, option four, giving them up to one hundred and twenty days or, you know, whatever, it's an arbitrary timeframe. But these boxes can be removed, but it will allow us an opportunity to conduct, to actually contact the property owners and the donation, donation box vendor and, and tell them they have to be removed. So one hundred and twenty days would, should be a reasonable amount of time.
Or January first.
Or January first.
I don't like that, that's real, real long. Hundred and twenty days seems reasonable. Can you put some structure in that, in your, in your, in your motion, Councilman Hare?
Yes, sir, to-
Prove with the effective one hundred and twenty days?
Yes, within the hundred and twenty days would be good.
All right, is, is that right for your second, sir?
Yes, I'll, I'll second that.
All right. All right, any discussion on the Hare-Wright motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for action on that. Clerk, motion carries unanimously by those present?
Mayor, can I ask the manager, Mr. Manager, let me ask you just one question. When, when these concerns came up and staff went out, or inspections, whoever went out, did any of the folk where those boxes were, the owners of the lots ever say that they gave permission, or somebody just came and dropped it out there? We just came out, it was out there one day. What, what, what was, what was the feedback?
In a lot of the, in every instance, they were given permission to have those boxes on the prop, on their properties.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Item eight point zero two, text amendment, Article thirty, Udo, reestablishment of non-conforming signs. Hello, how are you?
Good evening, how are you? Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. My name is Alicia Moore, Planner Two with Development Services. I have two text amendments before you tonight. TA twenty-one zero zero six is for the reestablishment of non-conforming signs, and TA twenty-one dash zero zero eight is for reconsideration of quasi-tudicial decisions. Starting with the non-conforming signs, at the work session in May, City Council directed staff to draft some options for proposed text amendments to allow for non-conforming signs to be rebuilt to their original form. In effect, the change would create a permanent and perpetual exemption from current or future standards in sign regulations. Sign regulations provide standards to, quote, safeguard life, public health, safety, property, and welfare by regulating the type, number, placement, size, and height of signs. Seen here are some of the tools to do that, including setting a maximum height and copy area, as well as a minimum setback from the property line to the sign. Regulations also cover the number and placement of signs. For example, the regulations say that there can be only one sign per property frontage along the street. So here, if this is all the same parcel, then there are two signs too many. However, if those extra two signs were erected before the adoption of the one sign per frontage rule, then those signs are allowed to remain as non-conforming signs. And the concept of non-conforming signs basically says that if you were following the rules when you built the sign, and then the rules changed afterwards, it really wouldn't be fair to require you to go back and change the sign to match these new requirements. But if they don't conform to the standards, they are deemed non-conforming signs and granted a temporary exemption so long as the sign remains in good repair. However, these standards throughout their Udo weren't built, built on whim, and the city has an interest in eventual conformance to the code. And the current sign regulations are based on the recommendations of the sign committee, which was formed as part of a City Council, Council Initiative to improve the city's appearance by reducing sign clutter. Members from both the city and the private sector contributed to the sign committee, and the recommendations that emerged were based on a City Council work, work session, as well as several meetings held throughout two thousand eight and nine. In the City Code, Section thirty-seven E-one expressly states that the goal to expeditiously eliminate non-conforming signs is as important to public welfare as regulations of new signs. This is Section thirty-seven E-six, which is the section issued tonight. If your sign has some damage, you're allowed to repair it back to its original non-conforming form. However, as provided by the section, if a sign deteriorates or is damaged by more than fifty percent, regardless of the cause, it must be removed. The assessment of damage is made by a certified building inspector as a function of the depreciated value of the sign immediately prior to the damage. So the proposed changes are to create an exception to that requirement, which would allow a non-conforming sign that has been destroyed or significantly damaged to be reestablished to its original standards. This would create an enduring nonconformity, meaning that if a sign is destroyed, it could be rebuilt as it was under the old standards, regardless of the standards that exist now or in the future. If City Council opts for approval, there are three options presented here. The first is to allow for it in general. Second is on a case-by-case basis with a special use permit. And the third one is to increase the damage threshold from fifty percent to seventy percent. So this is option one, to allow for the reestablishment in general. The new rule would create a distinction between a damaged sign, which is broken by accident at no fault of the owner, and a deteriorated sign, which is the result of a failure to maintain. A sign that has deteriorated by more than fifty percent would still have to be removed. However, if the damage was caused by accident, say a natural disaster, it can be rebuilt to its original non-conforming standards. The rule would, would apply to signs that are non-conforming for whatever reason, you know, they're, they're too big, too tall, too close together, too close to the road. So long as the signs are kept from significant deterioration, they would have this permanent and enduring exemption from the regulations. This is option two, which would allow a damaged, non-conforming sign to be rebuilt only with a special use permit. The owner would apply for review, and City Council would make the determination depending on the facts of each case. This is the process used by Raleigh, and also the option unanimously recommended by the Planning Commission on their meeting of June fifteenth. The Planning Commission expressed that code uniformity and the appearance of the city are important, but they also wanted to allow some leeway for non-conforming signs of historical value. And by creating this individualized process, historical signs can be rebuilt to their original form. Third, the damage threshold can be increased, meaning that it would take more damage to the sign before the removal requirement kicks in. In effect, this would shorten the reach of the regulation.
Excuse me, Mayor, if, if you would, could you all just tell IT to keep, keep the verbiage on the screen? Just, they keep going back and forth, just keep it up there as they go through. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, in effect, this would shorten the, the reach of the regulation. Instead of having that fifty percent damage threshold, any sign damaged by less than seventy percent could be rebuilt. These are some examples of non-conforming signs. The ones shown here are non-conforming with respect to their size, height, and setback. Under current regulations, so without the proposed changes, if these signs were knocked down, they could only be rebuilt to conform to the current standards in the code. With the changes, if the cabinets of these signs were destroyed, say like in a hurricane, they could be rebuilt as they were before. These signs are non-conforming because they exceed the one sign per property frontage rule. The parcel on the left has, has three signs, and the one on the right has two. And because these signs were in existence before the current standards were adopted, they are allowed to remain. But if one of the extra ones got knocked down, it couldn't be rebuilt at all, you know, because of that one size, one sign per frontage limit. With the proposed changes, if one of the extra signs was destroyed, so long as the foundation is intact, it can be put back up. These are some of the potential issues that staff identified. First, code enforcement would be difficult. Ideally, a code enforcement officer has a uniform set of standards to apply across the city. But if each sign is under its own standards, it becomes less efficient, and the city doesn't have anything like a registry of, of non-conforming signs, so it's not really possible to know. Next, the current regulations were created over the course of time with input from multiple departments and the private sector, including from the Chamber of Commerce and the sign industry. One of the most important factors in, in their formulation has been the aesthetics and the appearance of the city. Older standards don't necessarily take these factors and modern principles into account. Current regulations were also formulated in consultation with PWC to account for power lines, and since older regulations don't have that benefit, PWC would have to review and approve each time a sign is rebuilt under older standards. This is a summary comparison of peer city regulations. None allow for the reestablishment of non-conforming signs in general. One, Raleigh allows for it on a case-by-case basis with a special use permit, and they all have that fifty percent damage threshold, except for Wilmington, which didn't give an exact percentage. All right, so for approval, there are three options. Again, it's the option one in general, which distinguishes between a sign damaged by accident and one that's deteriorated. And option two, which is a case-by-case via SUP, and that was the Planning Commission's recommendation. And option three, to increase the damage threshold from fifty percent to seventy percent. And of course, then we have denial of the proposed changes, and keep the rules as they are, or make revisions for adoption, or to remand for additional information. That concludes my presentation. Any questions?
We'll save them to after we open the public hearing, if that's okay?
Sure.
All right. With that, we'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, any speakers?
No, sir.
All right, we'll close the public hearing. Councilman Hare?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Moore, one of the, from our agenda briefing, I'm going to bring up the same concerns that I had. I like the option one, if it's at the fifty percent damage. that the owner can rebuild their sign. What my concern is, it was stated by a couple of folk during the agenda briefing, is are we gonna have any verbiage of what 50% equals or is? If one inspector goes out one day and look at a sign, and then the different inspector goes and look at that sign or another sign, what if their opinions vary on what 50% is? So that's what my concern was right now with this item. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, I think Councilman Hare, if you could put the options back up there for us, whoever's controlling the screen. I think Councilman, well, if you could go back a couple slides to the businesses that had the older signs.
Only one. Does one?
No, to the other one. All right. So basically, as he said, there were twofold concerns. One is the discretion of the inspector to determine the damage. Okay? And so without a standard, it could vary from inspector to inspector what 50% is. Two, this is a very narrow exception that's being proposed, which would be if it's damaged by no fault of the sign owner. So that's accident, you know, hurricane, something extraordinary would happen. But the impact that it would have when it happens on the picture to the right, there are at least eight businesses on there that wouldn't be able to advertise, because they wouldn't be allowed to rebuild anything that showed their presence, correct, with the current order?
If they were to rebuild, it would have to be in compliance. So given that, if that is a single parcel, you know, I don't know the exact specifics of how it would work, but I guess they could combine to have all their businesses on a single sign as businesses now do under current regulations.
So hypothetically, something that happens at no fault of their own takes out their means to tell people where they are, and then they have to combine resources with other people that may or may not be willing to do it to rebuild, just to get back to square one. All right. Okay. All right, Council, any other questions? Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I'm gonna kind of piggyback off of what you had said. As I'm sitting here, you know, of course, it's a shopping center. So if the big sign went down, to get everybody in the shopping center on one sign, they would have to take down the small sign to get everybody on one sign. Is that correct? The way it is right now.
They wouldn't, I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand the question.
So this big sign right here, the one that we were looking at, that the mayor was looking at, is in the shopping center, General Jackson's. So that is one parcel. So the big sign, if the big sign stayed and the little sign got taken down, so Bingo could not put up another sign. But Bingo pays as much rent as every, per square footage, as everybody else, and there's no room on the big sign for them. And the landlord would have to figure out a way to put them on the sign. They would have to tear down the big sign and do one big sign for everybody in the parcel, is the way it reads right now.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So if something happened to the big sign, is what I'm saying, is that sign would be, the big sign would be gone, the little sign would be gone, and we're looking about a $30,000 sign probably to redo everybody on there at the end of the day. So if there was different parcels here, let's say there was, it wasn't a shopping center, and it was just different parcels, each person could have a sign.
Yes, one parcel is allowed, allowed one sign.
So let's say this is eight acres, and they were sold an acre a lot, there could be eight signs out there, if it was different parcels.
Yes.
And if they built that today, it could still be eight different signs.
Yes.
I know I'm being kind, but I'm just trying to figure, yeah, okay. So you've answered my questions, and thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Councilmember Kinston, then back to McGlaughlin.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The question I had is looking at the sign on Yakon Road, and I just want to make sure that I understand it, as Mayor Protim said. So if the big sign is just, let's say the big sign is destroyed, then the little sign at that point would still remain, but the big sign itself, everybody would have to come together to advertise on that sign, correct?
I believe that's correct, yes.
Okay. So what provision are in place if something happened multiple times within a year? Each time, they would have to replace?
Well, I mean, if I understand the question correctly, and please correct me if I'm answering the wrong question. If one of those signs, say, the big sign, were knocked down, and all the businesses were in agreement, okay, we'll just have a one sign, then the Bingo sign would come down, and they would have just that one sign with all the businesses on it. And if that sign were damaged again some other time during the year, they would be under the same requirements to have just a single sign.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Banks, McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. I ask my question, I'm curious to know why now, as far as the change? Has there been an increase in the deterioration of the signs?
The impetus was at the City Council work session in May. City Council directed staff to come up with a couple of options.
But have there, so there haven't been an increase in?
Not that I'd know of, no.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, I think we've answered all questions. Council, look to you for action on that. Is that Councilmember Hare, you doing it?
What my concern is, as far as formulating a motion, is I don't have a problem with adopting option one from my perspective, my thoughts, but we need to put something in there on how we come to certainty of 50%. And I'm speaking of damage to a sign to no fault of the property, you know, property owner of their own.
Commissioner Hare, just to answer your question regarding that, anytime there is a sign permit, a total valuation of the sign is actually written on the permit itself. So therefore, we know, have a good idea exactly how much each sign costs. So if there is some type of damage done to the sign, our chief building official, who has many years of experience, utilizing his expertise, he's able to help determine the cost valuation of that sign that has been damaged. But for the option number one, for which you're looking at, we're stating that if the cabinet of the sign is damaged, then it can be replaced, or the frame, or where the content goes on the sign. Now, that can be replaced. So, you know, we'll still do the 50% valuation of that, of how much the sign costs. We definitely work with the applicant or the property owner in determining how much the sign is valued, and how much damage has been assessed to that sign.
So the verbiage that you just mentioned about the cabinet?
Yes.
And I don't see it in number one, so take me back to what page I need to look at.
If the frame and faces of a nonconforming sign.
Got you. Got you. Well, that's where I stand, so.
All right, I think Councilmember Wright has a question.
Yes, can we go back to the verbiage on option number two? And I think this was the option that was adopted by staff, or?
The Planning Commission.
The Planning Commission.
Yes, sir.
And so I see here in option number two, that we still have the 50%, and I like the way you explained it, that staff will look at it in their professional opinion, take a, you know, evaluation of the sign, and what the cost of that sign would be now, or what the cost of the sign was when it was first. I'm sorry? Both, and to determine the 50% damage. Okay. I like option number two, and I think, because what we're looking at is the fairness of it. As we go out and send staff to look at these signs, some companies are not flowing well, especially after COVID. And if something happens, signs are damaged, it may, you know, create a great impact for them to get 50% to get that sign back up. So we're looking at, you know, fairness across the board, and that option number two, I think, would bring that fairness across the board for every small business owner, every sign owner, if that makes sense.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Wright. The only thing I was thinking about with option two is it requires a council action for every single sign. Like, we're dealing with numerous special use permits now because of
Got you.
Because of triggers that say, if you're gonna do this kind of business, you gotta come back to council. And so in a situation, you know, as a small business person, advertising, that's all you have, you know, the impediment to come back to council, you may get on the agenda, and plus the bog-down logjam that it would create for councils. To do that every single time a sign is replaced, I think, would be tough. But the 50% concern that you have, and the equality of it, is also in option number one. So the fact that he explained it, that is consistent with what your concern was.
Okay. That sounds good, because I wasn't looking at him bringing it back to council every time. Is that what option number two actually said?
Yes.
Okay, got you.
All right. Mayor Protim.
I think you explained it. I'm good, thank you.
All right, Council, so we need to make a decision for staff. We can entertain a motion.
And Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept option one of the text amendment for item TA 21-006.
All right, is the motion by Councilmember Hare for acceptance, utilizing option one? There's a second by Councilmember Wright. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Council, I'll look to you for your votes. All right, Madam Clerk, that motion carries 62. Those voting in favor, Councilman Davis, Banks, McGlaughlin, Wright, Colvin, Jensen, and Hare, those voting opposed, Councilmembers Ingram and Kinston. All right, motion carries. Item 8.03.
All right. The next one is TA 21-008, which is just to update City Code so that it correctly states the conditions under which a quasi-judicial decision can be reconsidered. These conditions are set by North Carolina state case law, so we're just updating the code to reflect the requirements of the state. So for legislative decisions, the city has flexibility in determining the rules surrounding the hearings and decisions. So in the code, it allows for legislative decisions to be reconsidered after a one-year waiting period, which can be waived in certain circumstances. For quasi-judicial decisions, where the board acts more like a court, there are much more specific and strict rules, which are set by the state. One of these rules, under the legal principle of res judicata, says that once a decision has been properly rendered, that same matter cannot be relitigated. However, the exception to this rule is if there has been a material change in either the conditions surrounding the application or in the relevant ordinance standards. This material change has to be so significant that the application can no longer reconsider the same claim. The issue is that City Code has the same procedures for both legislative and quasi-judicial decisions. The relevant section, which is 30-2B22, waiver of time limit, establishes that any development decision that requires a public hearing, so that's both legislative and evidentiary hearings, can be reconsidered after a one-year waiting period, which can be waived under certain circumstances. And while this one-year waiting period is permissible for legislative decisions, it is not permissible for quasi-judicial decisions. Instead, the rule under state case law is that quasi-judicial decisions, once rendered, cannot be reconsidered, with the exception of a material change that is so significant that it can't fairly be considered the same claim. Now, it's possible that in the course of a year, there have been material changes that could trigger that exception, but the mere passage of a year wouldn't do it. These are the main points for the proposed amendment. First, the name of the section would be changed from waiver of time limit to reconsideration of decisions. The waiver, the conditions for a waiver would still be there, but the reason for the name change is that the focus of the section has been broadened to address the distinct procedures for both types of decisions. Number two, the changes limit the existing language about the one-year waiting period and waiver to apply only to legislative decisions. Finally, number three, which is the bulk of the changes, adds a new paragraph to address reconsideration of quasi-judicial decisions. Again, these procedures are set by case law of the state, and the only thing that we did here is to try to write them clearly and in a way that fits in with our existing code structure. So that if an applicant sought reconsideration, it would be on the applicant to submit evidence sufficient to demonstrate the material change, and the board would have to follow quasi-judicial procedures when reviewing that evidence. If the board finds that there has been a material change, then the applicant can resubmit their claim, otherwise, the decision stands, or the applicant could appeal to the Superior Court. Before I get to the options and recommendation, do you have any questions about the proposed changes?
We will reserve those questions after we open and close the public hearing.
I think I'm getting the pattern. All right.
All right. With that, we'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, any speakers?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll close it. Councilman Hare.
Thank you, Mayor. The one-year waiver, is that the amendment portion for the new text?
No, so as it stands right now, the section that addresses reconsideration of decision lumps them both together. And it says that for both types of decisions, there's a one-year waiting period, but that waiting period can be waived under certain circumstances. And the change is to say, okay, no, that provision only applies to legislative decisions. And so it's limiting that provision, the one-year waiting period and waiver of one-year waiting period, to legislative. And for quasi-judicial, it's a new sub-paragraph that says that in general, once a quasi-judicial decision has been rendered, no city board can rehear it, no matter the time has passed, with the exception of a material change.
Let me make sure I'm understanding. So when you say the legislative, you meaning legal actions?
I'm sorry, what do you mean, legal actions?
Okay. But then, let me understand this, then. Then, when there is a legal, because I think I asked this during the briefing, so if there is a quasi-judicial action that has been heard from City Council, the only way that that can, is superseded if there is a legal court action through the state that supersedes City Council?
Yes, sir. So I think what you're requesting clarification on is ordinarily in
I'm just thinking about some things we've dealt with in the past.
Yes, sir. That's what I was, that's what I was gonna get to. So typically, with a quasi-judicial case, it would not come back to you unless, as you pointed out, there was some type of direction from the court, so a remand, then it might would come back. Otherwise, it would not come back unless there has been a significant change in the application, such that it is deemed a new application.
I understand. I understand. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Council, any other questions? And now, can you just clarify at the beginning of this? You said part of this change was to be consistent with state law, which supersedes anything we're talking about anyway. So what part of that is that portion?
So the state law So, the, the state law, it comes from the, uh, cases, the state court cases, and what it says is that this legal principle, um, reis judicata, which says that once a case has been heard, it can't be relitigated, that quasi judicial land use decisions are subject to that. And the way our, our code is written right now, that's not what it says.
Inconsistent.
Right.
All right. Okay. All right. So, Council will need action to, uh, get us consistent with state law. All right. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that we accept the text amendments to Article 30 of the United Development Ordinance for reconsideration of quasi judicial decisions.
All right. It's a motion by Mayor Protem. Is there a second? There's a second by Councilman Davis. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Council, I'll look to you for your votes. Councilmember Banks, McGlaughlin. Uh, okay. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Dr. Newton.
Uh, we're happy to have you gotten through those three legislative hearings, and now that you've just heard that and the reminder of what comes next, evidentiary hearing, that's what you have. You have one SUP that you're getting ready to hear. You've heard it many times. I'll read the script, and then I'll turn it over to the mayor. We'll have staff do the presentation. What will be a little bit different is we've had the mics in the back. They'll be coming up here now. All right. So, tonight we have one special use case. They'll be presented by the applicant with action to be taken by the city council. All individuals wishing to speak as a witness should have signed up before the hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak that needs to sign up?
We have two speakers, Mr. William Daniel and Mr. Eli Perry.
All right. So, we will ask those two individuals who are speaking to provide, that they will provide competent material, substantial evidence to the city council under oath. Anyone planning on speaking that we just heard, please stand and be sworn in by the city clerk to swear or affirm that the testimony you plan to give is true.
Gentlemen, if you could please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth? So, help you God. Thank you.
Staff will now proceed with the presentation, and we won't open public hearing until after the presentation.
I'm Jennifer Baptiste, Senior Planner with Development Services. Tonight, we have a request for a special use permit to construct a self-service storage mini warehouse in the limited commercial zoning district. The application was submitted by Mr. William Daniel of William G. Daniel and Associates on behalf of the owner of the property, Fluffy LLC. The request is for, to be located at 4209 Bragg Boulevard, and the request is in District As you can see from the aerial map, um, just to give you a little idea of where the property is located, just to the north of this property alone, Bragg Boulevard, is a now vacant site of the former Boulevard Motel. To the south is Kelly and Kelly Auto Sales, and to the east of the property is, across Bragg Boulevard, is the future home of Fire Station Number Four and the Velagio Apartments. And just to the, um, west of the property is the old golf, the old golf driving range, which has recently been approved to have two new, um, hotels constructed on the site. According to the zoning map, this site and the sites to the west have been, um, zoned as limited commercial. All properties to the north, south, and east of the property are currently zoned as community According to the land use map, um, this site is, would best be developed as high, in high-density residential. However, due to the nature of Fort Bragg Boulevard and the surrounding area, staff feels that this area should be developed, um, with commercial development. The subject property, as you can see from the photo, is currently vacant. The site was used as a mobile home, modular home sales lot known as Choo Choo Homes until about 2013, when the business closed. Again, to the west of the property is the old driving range. To the north is the vacant Boulevard Motel site. To the south is Kelly and Kelly Auto Sales, and to the east is the Velagio Apartments and the site where Station, um, Fire Station Four will be, um, constructed. This site has been, um, seen through TRC and only received preliminary comments regarding fire hydrants and landscaping. There was no significant issue from TRC. However, once a formal application has been submitted to TRC, the application will have to go back, um, for formal review. The proposed site plan shows that this will be a single-story, um, building that will be approximately 88,550 square feet, um, with access to Bragg Boulevard. The building will have approximately 544 rental units, with renters being able to access the, um, site 24 hours via, um, an access code. Here is a rendering of what, um, the site will look like once it, once it's development, once it's developed, with landscaping facing, um, Fort, Fort Bragg Boulevard, as well as surrounding the building, and the building will have a brick facade. There are several, um, development standards associated with self-storage, self-service storage mini warehouses that include site layout, operation, parking and circulation, building appearance, fencing, and open space. Again, TRC has evaluated the site based on the development standards, and they did not have any major comments or concerns with the site. The recommendation is to approve the requested special use permit to allow the construction of the, of a self-storage mini warehouse in an area zoned limited commercial. The general consistency statement for approval should include the amendment is consistent with applicable plans and, because the city's unified development ordinance supports self-storage mini warehouses in an LLC. The uses surrounding this property are a mix or commercial use, which are compatible with the proposed special use permit, and the proposed special use permit is reasonable and in the public's, um, interest because the proposed zoning fits the character of the overall area. Staff is available for any questions, as well as two representatives for the application
So, we're gonna open up the hearing. Do we have any speakers?
Mayor Protem, our first speaker is Mr. William Daniel.
Mayor Colvin. Mayor Protem. Uh, Jensen.
If you could please, uh, state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
My name is, uh, Bill Daniel with William G. Daniel and Associates. I'm a civil engineer registered in the state of North Carolina with over 40 years of experience as a, um, civil engineer, site planner, um, and land planner. I'm here representing Fluffy LLC, uh, as well as the developer, Pinnacle Bragg LLC. As Jennifer stated, the, um, property is located at 4209 Bragg Boulevard, and it's zoned LC. And one of the conditions of allowing a self-storage facility is that a special use permit is required. My purpose before you tonight is to explain the justifications, offer the justifications that will allow you to, uh, affirmatively find that the findings of fact have been satisfied. There are eight such findings of fact. And these, ink, the findings of fact are that the proposed use and the plan, uh, is, one, consistent, uh, is, uh, in compliance with the applicable standards of the UDO, Section 30 dash 4C, special use, uh, standards. Two, is compatible with the character of surrounding lands and uses permitted in the zoning district. Three, avoids significant adverse impacts on surrounding lands. Four, is configured to minimize adverse impacts, including visual impacts on adjacent lands. Five, avoids significant deterioration of water and air resources, wildlife habitat, scenic resources, and other natural resources. Six, maintains safe ingress and egress and, and, uh, safe road conditions around the site. Seven, allows for the potential, I mean, the protection of property values and the ability of neighboring lands to develop uses permitted in the zoning district. And eight, complies with other relevant city, state, and federal laws and regulations. The first of those eight, uh, findings of fact have six subheadings, and those subheadings are site layout, operation, parking and circulation, building appearance, fencing, and open storage. The application that you were forwarded in your package includes our written justifications regarding those items and the remaining seven. I will summarize those now for the record. Rather than go through each individual item, uh, I will, uh, do it more in a narrative form. It might be a little quicker that way.
Yes, sir.
Um, the parcel of this request exceeds the minimum lot area of three acres as specified in the UDO. A single building is proposed, thereby rendering the UDO requirement for separation between buildings inapplicable. The proposed operation includes only the rental of storage bays. There is no, uh, manufacturing, commercial use, or other use, uh, proposed, thereby complying with the requirements of the UDO, which prohibits those uses. The individual storage bays or postal, or, or, um, private postal boxes within the self-storage facility, uh, shall not be considered premises for the purposes of, uh, a legal address. That's specifically spelled out in your UDO and will be prohibited anyhow, but I'm just reading it into the record. No caretaker quarters are included in the proposal, thereby rendering the UDO's requirement that you can have only one inapplicable to this project. All properties stored on the site shall be enclosed entirely within enclosed buildings. Uh, there are no abutting residentially zoned properties, so the limitations that UDO imposes on operating hours is inapplicable. The interior parking is provided by aisles that circle the building, and the width of those aisles, uh, accommodate customer parking while using the, uh, storage bays. The UDO specifies a width of 21 feet and minimum width of 21 feet. Our aisles are 25 feet wide, thereby complying with the requirements. The project has been designed to accommodate two-way traffic and will be marked, pavement markings will be, uh, installed, uh, indicating same. The radius and, the radius and width of the driveway and the interior aisles have been evaluated to accommodate the turning templates for, templates for, um, life safety vehicles. All access ways are, of course, to be paved with asphalt or concrete. The garage doors serving individual storage units are restricted to the sides and the rear of the building, with no visibility from Bragg Boulevard. The proposed building height does not exceed the limit of 20 feet as specified in the UDO. The outdoor lighting of the facility will be the minimum necessary to discourage vandalism and theft and shall be in conformity with Section 30 dash 5E exterior lighting of the UDO. The exterior facades of the building facing the public street will be, um, brick or split-faced masonry. Windows within the street facing, uh, street-facing facade will not exceed 20% of the facade area and will not be reflective. A maximum of two colors will be used on the wall facades visible from off-site areas, and those colors will be neutral, and the, uh, colors and the, uh, pattern of those colors will be done in, in such a way so as not to attract attention to the facility. No exterior walls visible from the public street will include metal as the primary material. All mechanical equipment and dumpsters will be fully screened from off-site views. There's no, uh, the, the, the proposed development includes fencing of all areas adjacent to the street frontage, not occupied by the building or customer parking. There is no chain link fence visible from, uh, Bragg Boulevard. Uh, any fencing visible from Bragg Boulevard will be, um, metal or masonry. The gates also are not chain linked. The, the plan includes no outdoor or open storage. Those were the six subheadings there under the first item. The remaining seven, uh, findings of fact deal with compatibility, protection of surrounding and abutting properties and natural resources, safety and impacts on abutting roadways, and compliance with all relevant city, state, federal laws and regulations. I'd like to summarize the factors that justify, uh, satisfying of these findings. The proposed use with its specified exterior building materials, paved drives and parking areas, and foundation and VUA landscaping ensures compatibility with the abutting and surrounding uses. The proposed use, that being a climate-controlled self-storage, is inherently free of objectional elements related to noise, odor, high-traffic volumes, and vibrations. The site will be served by a single right-in, right-out driveway on Bragg Boulevard, and will include a drive aisle that extends completely around the building for efficiency and convenience. The site will be fenced, and no interconnection with abutting parcels is proposed, thereby eliminating the potential for any impact of customer traffic upon abutting parcels and uses. The site configuration, building design and placement, and landscape treatment has been designed to ensure that the development will have no adverse impacts on abutting properties. Specifically, the site is accessed by a single driveway on Bragg Boulevard. The building includes no overhead doors on the building side, building facade facing Bragg Boulevard. High-quality building materials are proposed for the exterior of the building, and the landscaping of the site conforms to the requirements of the UDO. The site of this application was previously developed as a commercial use. It has been cleared for years, and most of the site has been stabilized with aggregate base cores. There is very little, if any, wildlife habitat on the site. The project includes a stormwater control measure to ensure the protection of downstream property owners with respect to quality and quantity of stormwater runoff. The architectural restrictions included in the special use, um, permit, along with configuration of the site improvements and the proposed landscaping will ensure that the project will enhance the appearance of Bragg Boulevard. The development will be served by a single driveway, as I've said, on Bragg Boulevard. The driveway will be constructed of sufficient width and with the turnout radius required to accommodate safe and efficient ingress and egress for customer traffic, as well as life safety vehicles. The proposed use by its nature is a very low-traffic generation use, uh, thereby resulting in fewer traffic- traffic movements from and onto Bragg Boulevard than would be experienced with other, most other commercial uses. The proposed use with the features of the building and site as specified on the plan included in the application will ensure that the use is aesthetically pleasing. The proposed use avoids the negative impacts of traffic, noise, vibration, and other, other factors that could otherwise prove detrimental to the property values and development potential of abutting parcels. As depicted on the site plan included in the application for the proposed development, the use for which this SUP is requested complies with all use regulations and development standards of the City of Fayetteville. The proposed development conforms to the storm regulations of the city and state and other applicable local, state, and federal regulations. Based on the submitted special use application and documents that we included with that application, and the justifications that we've summarized here tonight, we feel that the required eight findings of fact have been satisfied. I will, of course, be glad to answer any questions that I can, and Mr. Eli Perry, representing the developing entity, is here as well to answer questions if you have any. We appreciate the consideration, and we ask for your support of the SUP.
Thank you, sir. Any, any questions, Councilman Wright?
You, you mentioned, sir, that...
Mr. Mayor, we do have one more speaker.
Oh, okay, okay. I was playing catch-up on this. All right. All right. Thanks, sir. Just hang around for a little bit. Yes, sir.
The, the other speaker is here just for questions.
Okay. So he can, he can waive his time. All right. Councilman Wright?
Uh, yeah, you mentioned something about your stormwater runoff, that you had put some things in place. How, what has been done to ensure that the stormwater runoff of your area does not impact your neighboring businesses?
At the stage that we had, when you saw that site plan? We've identified an area on the site plan at the lowest topographic portion of the site. It's, it's near the...
Okay.
Uh, this is getting projected up. Oh, there you go. All right. A little slow there. Okay, in the lower right-hand corner. In the lower right-hand corner, the area that you see in white there that we've preserved, that is for a, a wet pond or a bio-retention area. We think it'd be a wet pond. Hasn't gone through that design process yet.
Okay.
But that's the area that we have identified for the stormwater management device. The, as I said, much of the site is currently impervious because it is, it's, it's already gravelled. Part of the site actually drains to Bragg Boulevard. Part of the site drains to the rear. The portion of the site that we would be treating is the portion that drains to the rear. The portion that drains to the front, we're actually going to be reducing the impervious area that drains to Bragg Boulevard. So we don't envision any treatment on that portion of the site. And as far as the, you were asking specifically about how, how we would propose to ensure that downstream properties or abutting properties are not impacted. We would be routing the stormwater runoff from all impervious areas either to Bragg Boulevard or through that stormwater impoundment. And that would be designed as a, a SEM to state standards, so the, it would control the peak rate of runoff as, as well as total suspended solids.
Is this, is this runoff of this pond, is it designed like a twenty-five-year, fifty-year? Do you have a reservoir under or it's just a pond itself that, that will hold the runoff? How's that designed?
It, it is, it is just a pond. The, it is a wet pond as drawn, and I, I have to say that the size that you see on here is not accidental because we, we determined that size based on controlling a, a minimum of the ten-year storm and actually probably the twenty-five-year storm.
Okay.
But we haven't gotten to that point in the detailed design yet. When Jennifer was talking about submitting plans, when we do the detailed site plan after the special use, we'll, we'll actually propose the specifics of that.
Specifics of that, yeah.
But, but I know that the, the room that we have laid out on the plan is adequate to control, I'll go ahead and say, is adequate to control at least a twenty-five-year storm.
Least twenty-five?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to know that specifically once these plans are laid out because we, we're certainly concerned with stormwater runoff, and that's one of our biggest problems here. So as we develop new infrastructure, we would love to ensure that those things are handled aforetime. So, you know, we had those hundred-year storms and something he can't do anything about per se, but...
Every year.
Yeah, every year. We have them every year now. So thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Kinston?
Yes, Mayor. If there was no additional questions, I was ready to make a motion.
I'd like a plan.
Okay. So...
Uh, I need to close the public hearing, I believe. Is it closed? Yeah. All right. So we'll close the public hearing. I do have a question before you do that. Uh, Councilmember Ingram has a question. Oh, is that a second? Okay. Back to you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. So I would like to make a motion to approve SUP twenty-one oh two, special use permit to construct a self-service mini warehouse at four oh, four-two oh nine Bragg Boulevard, zoning as a limited commercial, being four-point-eleven acres, and being the property of Fluffy LLC represented by Wim, uh, Wim G. Daniel and Associates. Also to strove that it did meet the eight findings of facts were met. One, the special use will comply with all applicable standards in section thirty dash four C, use of specific standards, that the special use is compatible with the characters of the surrounding land and use permit in the zoning district and surrounding land. Three, that the special use permit avoids any significant adverse impact on surrounding lands regarding service, delivery, parking, loading, odors, noise, glare, vibrations. Four, that the special use permit avoids significant adverse, excuse me, four that the special use permit configures to size adverse, including visible implants of the proposed use adjacent land. Five, that the special use permit avoids significant deterioration of water, air resources, wildlife habitat, scenes, resources, and natural surroundings. Six, that the special use permit maintains sa, safe egress and egress onto the site, the safe road conditions around the site. Seven, that the special use permit uses, allows for protection of property value and the ability of neighboring lands to develop the use permit in the zoning district. And eight, that the special use permit complies with all reverse city, state, and federal regulations. In addition, if approved, that this special use permit shall be effective ten days after its approval by the Council, which is July eighth, twenty-twenty-one, and the SUP will expire one year from the effective date if the building permit is not issued. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. This is a motion by Councilmember Kinston that included all of that, and a second by Councilmember Ingram. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Council, look to you for action. Adam Kirk, that is unanimous. Motion carries. Eight to zero. Public hearing, item ten point. Individuals desiring to speak at the public hearings must have signed up to speak with the city clerk by name and address before seven PM this evening. Fifteen minutes will, will be allowed for each side of the issue at the public hearing. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each unless by previous arrangement a single spokesperson is designated, in which case the spokesperson may use the entire fifteen minutes. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium, clearly state your name and address for the record. You may then address the Council. When the light changes from green to amber or you're notified, you'll have thirty seconds remaining. At the end of your allotted time, the timer will ring. At this time, we'll yield for presentation. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor, City Council presenting deny a stormwater variance request for a proposed commercial development located at fifteen thirty-five and fifteen forty-one Purdue Drive. The purpose of this is the city stormwater ordinance requires the installation of stormwater control measures when adding more than five thousand square foot of impervious area for a previously developed site, or twenty thousand square foot of impervious area for a newly developed site. The Purdue Road site currently has around fifty-two hundred square feet of impervious area currently constructed on it. There's two residential homes. The proposed development will increase to nineteen thousand one hundred and sixty-six square feet. So the proposed development is removing those two residential structures and then building back a commercial development. As it currently is, it is characterized as redevelopment, and when it's redevelopment, there's a threshold of five thousand square foot of impervious before stormwater control measures has, have to be implemented. The owner is requiring, requesting a variance so the site may be considered new development. If it is considered new development versus redevelopment, that would allow for the addition of up to twenty thousand square foot of impervious area without on-site stormwater control measure being required. So just to kind of give you an example of new versus redevelopment, example one's new development, example two is redevelopment. You'll see we have the same-sized parcel, the same proposed development, but depending upon what is there existing now, one doesn't require stormwater, the other does require stormwater. So if it's considered new development, there would be no on-site stormwater. If it is considered redevelopment, stormwater would be required.
Question for, question for you. Mr. Hewitt, didn't we change that to make it consistent? Didn't the redevelopment versus new development, the five thousand versus twenty thousand?
We, back in January, we had a similar variance.
Not talking about the variance, I'm talking about the rule itself.
It's not been changed. There's not been a text amendment to change that.
Yeah, we, we talked about this. Doug, you familiar with us having this conversation about making that consistent? No? We'll search the minutes. Okay. Sorry for the interruption.
No problem. So if you look at an aerial of the site, you'll see to the left, it's, it's two parcels, two adjacent residential houses. Here's a zoomed-out version. Now, if you look to the north, you've got Rayford Road. To the west is Purdue Drive. To the east is Forsyth Drive. Just kind of for everybody, this is the Chick-fil-A on Rayford Road right here. So just kind of giving you a point of reference. Currently, this property is located within a priority sub-basin that is currently being studied as part of the Blunts Creek Watershed Study as part of the city's overall master There have also been some stormwater complaints on Breeze Wood Avenue. So this, the area on Purdue Drive is near an area that we are having some stormwater issues within the right-of-way. However, I just wanted to show this to show that this subject property does not discharge to the area where the stormwater accumulates on Breeze Wood Avenue. And we've checked, this proposed development has no downstream impacts to the system conveying the stormwater from Breeze Wood Avenue or Forsyth Drive. So the issues on Breeze Wood will not be affected by anything that's done on this Purdue Avenue or Purdue Drive site. We also took a look, based on the information we have from the current ongoing watershed study, we have survey data for the area. And what we found is there is an existing pipe system on Purdue Drive that is near capacity, so it's not at capacity or overcapacity, but it is near capacity. You do see some areas in blue shown on the exhibit that indicate a little bit of a spread of about a half an inch of water within the right-of-way, but that is due to a, a lack of inlet capacity on the road, and it's not, not considered flooding. The increased runoff generated from the developed property, which is about one-point-two cubic feet per second, contributes to no, contributes little to no increase in the spread here. So if you'll see, the, the proposed development doesn't really have an impact within the system on the right-of-way. Here is a pre-imposed site, what is being proposed. Again, on the left, you'll see the pre-development impervious area, where you've got those two residential homes, and then a proposed layout of a commercial site with parking lot and So we've met with the owners, engineered, reviewed the project, variance request, a letter of notice, petition of variance request was mailed to nearby property owners within five hundred feet. We filed the public hearing notice from the Federal Observer, and we've also placed a variance sign on front of the property. Staff's recommendation is to approve the variance request that would allow this site to be considered new development. So if it's considered new development, we would not be requiring on-site stormwater control measures for these two sites. So if the variance request is denied, the site would be considered redevelopment and stormwater requirement will hinder the owner's ability to pursue this development plan.
Thank you, sir. We have a couple of questions, but what we'll do is open the public hearing and deal with it that way, so. All right, with that, we'll open the public hearing. Madam Kirk, we have any speakers?
Yes, sir. Uh, we have one speaker, Mr. Dale Crawford.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm Dale Crawford, Crawford Design Company, one sixteen North Cool Spring Street, and I represent our client, Mr. Jack Hare. As Mr. Reese pointed out, there is a significant discrepancy in the ordinance as it currently written, and it discourages, basically discourages redevelopment. So if you have some homes such as this and all, and, and these have been kept up, but there is no landscaping, there's, there are fifty-style homes and all. The opportunities to redevelop the site and to remove those homes and put in a nice development, comply with your landscape ordinance, comply with all the UDO ordinances. Of course, this will comply with those if you all so desire to approve this variance. The other item to point out is we didn't go the maximum twenty thousand square feet. It's nineteen thousand square feet, but it's only about fourteen thousand square feet of new impervious area and not the twenty thousand square feet that you could go under, under new development. So we looked at that. There are some opportunities to maybe increase some pipe sizes and things like that, slow the water down, and also there's some opportunities there. We won't be dumping the water, surface drain into the streets, it'll be pipe system. So I'm here to answer any questions you, you have, but to enhance the city by doing redevelopment on these sites, I think only increases the visual appeal of the city and I hope you all will accept the ordinance request.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Uh, any other, Madam Kirk, any other speakers?
No, sir.
All right. That will close the public hearing. We have a couple of questions. Councilmember Ingram and then Mayor Proton.
I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion, so if you could come back to me, please. Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor Proton?
Um, I think Mr. Crawford has said what I needed to say. Thank you.
All right. With that, I, I do, well, we'll take our vote and I'll get with the clerk after. All right, Councilmember Ingram?
I move to approve the variance allowing the site to be considered new development.
All right. This is a motion by Councilmember Ingram to approve, the second by Councilmember Banks McLaughlin. Any discussion on the motion? Council, I'll look to you for your votes. Adam Kirk, motion carries. unanimous. Thank you, sir. Item ten point zero two. Ms. Keisha, how are you?
Fine. How are y'all doing today?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. The city has received a petition from an adjacent property owner to close an unopened portion of an alley that's off of Gillespie Street. The plumbing business owner wants to expand and purchase the property south and east of the alley. I have a picture up there now because I wanted you to see that the alley is actually not there. It's right adjacent to the railroad tracks and goes back into those woods. Staff followed the procedures dictated by North Carolina General Statute one sixty-eight dash two ninety-nine for street closure. We mailed certified letters to the adjacent property owners, posted both ends of the alleyway, and published notice in the newspaper for four consecutive weeks. We also followed our own city policy and contacted utility companies. We will be reserving an easement, if, if the alley is closed, we will be reserving an easement right there where the arrow is pointing to for PWC. They have a water line running through there. for P W C, they have a water line running through there. I can go ahead and move to the next screen, too. We've contacted A and R Railroad, just because of the proximity to the railroad, to make sure they didn't have any issues if we closed the alley. And they did not have any issues. We also had our traffic engineer do a traffic study just to see if there would be any issues with traffic flow. Obviously, with it not being open, there weren't any. And also, the size of the alley is so narrow that you couldn't have traffic on it anyway if we were to open it up. We contacted police, fire, and rescue to make sure that they wouldn't have any issues with closing the alley, and they also had no, no issues with it either. Any questions?
Uh, do have one, this is a public hearing, so we'll hold that till till the end, Ms. Keisha. Uh, with that, I open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, any speakers?
Yes, ma'am, we have one speaker, Mr. George Reagan.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm George Reagan, I'm attorney with law firm at Thorpe and Clark here in Fayetteville. We represent the business owner who is attempting to purchase this property. He's trying to purchase this property for future expansion of his plumbing business. There's, these alleyways will prevent him from being able to build anything across the property in the future. They're also currently preventing him from being able to obtain title insurance, um, to ensure the title to the property, um, which is preventing him from getting a loan, making it necessary for him to effectuate this pur- this purchase. All around, it's a good, good for the city to see businesses wanting to expand, especially in the wake of, uh, this COVID-nineteen epidemic. It's, we see shuttering many businesses. We're here, um, on behalf of of this owner to, uh, get this alleyway closed for the future. I'm here to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, sir, uh, Councilmember Ingram, is that a question? Okay, all right, seeing none, sir, let me, Madam Clerk, any other speakers?
No, sir.
All right, with that, we'll close the public hearing, Councilmember Ingram.
Um, I move to adopt the resolution in order to closing of the, of a portion of an alley off of Gillespie Street.
All right, this is motion by Councilmember Ingram, is there a second? Second by Councilmember Hare, any discussion on the motion? Counsel, I'll look to you for action on that. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous, motion carries. Good luck to you all, thank you for expanding. Item ten point zero three. Juan Valdez himself.
We're moving along quite great tonight.
Oh, yeah?
Making great time.
It's a matter of opinion.
All right, so this is our last, uh, public hearing we have here. This is actually a combination of all three requests for street renaming. Uh, we have S N twenty-one oh five, S N twenty, twenty-one oh six, and S N twenty-one oh seven. Uh, so we're, uh, we combine these just to have one public hearing to save time. So, we'll begin with zero five, which is consideration of renaming unnamed street to Tiger Avenue. Due to the project in the city, due to a road project, Legend Avenue has been realigned to go straight out to U S four oh one to intersect with the traffic signals at Walmart on Sky Bowl Road with the implementation of the next-gen E nine-one-one standard. You can have two streets, you cannot have two streets with the same name. This, uh, this request is in District Nine, and staff recommends approval. Um, as you can see here, here's Legend Avenue, the blue is where the street will be renamed, here, this portion. And here's Skywell Road, to give you all an idea of exactly where it's located. The next item is S N twenty-one oh six, uh, renaming a portion of Sandy Valley Road to Bishop T J Bethay Road. Uh, this is from the quest from the Gospel Missionary Church to rename a portion of Sandy Valley Road to Bishop T J Bethay Senior Road. Bishop Bethay has been an integral part of the community and has hosted numerous community events. And they would like to honor him. This is all, this is, request is in District Two, and staff recommends approval. As you can see here, here's the unnamed road, you have Owen Drive, and then you have Southern Avenue and Camden Road that goes parallel. Our last one is S N twenty-one oh seven, consideration of renaming Princeton Street to Moose Butler Lane. County staff received this request from Larry Chason to rename Princeton Street to Moose Butler Lane. Princeton Street currently serves three parcels that belong to, to the Massey Hill Baptist Church. Uh, Moose Butler has attempted, has attended Massey Hill Baptist Church for sixty years. Uh, he grew up in the Massey Hill air, community and serves as the sheriff for Cumberland County for twenty-two years. He was married in Massey Hill Baptist Church and graduated from Massey Hill High School. This request is in District Two, and staff recommend approval. As you can see here, here's the Massey Hill Baptist Church, the blue is the unnamed road, and here is Southern Avenue. At this time, staff recommends approval for all three requests, and this is a public hearing.
Thank you, sir, uh, this time we'll open public hearing, Madam Clerk, any speakers?
Ma'am, we have no speakers for this item.
All right, we'll close with the public hearing, I just had one question before I go to Councilmember Ingram. Where'd y'all get the name Tiger Street, Tiger Road, what's that? Who made that, okay, all right. No rhyme or reason, huh? All right, thought it was a story behind it. Uh, Council, uh, Councilmember Ingram.
Tiger in in the, Massey Hill does have some historical presence, I don't know personally what it is, but our mentoring youth group in Massey Hill is the Massey Hill Tigers. Um, I want to believe that it's a part of Massey Hill High School, I'm not sure, but that it it is a thing in Massey Hill, the Tigers. Um, with that, I like, I move to approve the naming of all proposed streets.
All right, this is motion by Councilmember Ingram, is the second by Councilmember Wright, any discussion on the motion? All right, counsel, look to you for action. All right, Madam Clerk, motion carries unanimously. I guess I have to call Bishop Bethay and get his autograph, he's got a whole street named after him.
Thank you, sir.
Certainly the sheriff, too, all right, thanks. Uh, item eleven point, other businesses, eleven point zero one, it's the Americans with Disabilities Act Transition Plan. Mr. Brooke, how are you?
Doing well, sir, how is, uh, Mayor and Council doing this evening? Okay, so, good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm Brooke Redding, the Assistant to the City Manager, and I'm here this evening to present to you the Americans with Disabilities Act Transition Plan for the City of Fayetteville. So, for the past eighteen months, staff has systematically gone through the city and evaluated all of our public spaces, sidewalks, buildings, the, everything that we own, uh, and conducted public participation through a series of webinars and other special request briefings and presentations. And I'm here to really give you the high-level information, as well as provide you with, uh, the freshly printed books that we have in front of you for you to take home and review at your leisure. Uh, so this evening, we're going to quickly go over the ADA and the purpose of it. And then I I broke out the Title Two, which I'll get to in a second, into three groups about communications, information, facility signage, and overviews, our public buildings and spaces, and then our pedestrian facilities and our public rightaways. And then I'll also cover, uh, our public participation survey results from the accessibility survey that we issued out to our residents. So, what is the Americans with Disabilities Act? It is a civil rights law. It prohibits discrimination against individuals with disabilities in, uh, all areas of public life, including jobs, schools, transportation, and other public and private places that are open to the general public. It was established in nineteen ninety, it was amended later in two thousand eight. There are five titles to the law, and Title Two applies to government entities or public entities. And inside of Title Two, there's actually four priorities, which I'll talk about shortly. The purpose of the ADA was to mandate, uh, to eliminate discrimination against disabilities, create standards addressing discrimination, establish government role in enforcing standards, and congressional authority to address, uh, discrimination. So, breaking down, uh, through the research that we did, uh, and I spoke about that a few months ago when I brought this to council in February, uh, but in our communications, information, and facility signage, and through the four priorities of evaluation, we've identified ten barriers, uh, in our administrative buildings, nine barriers to accessibility in our fire stations, two in our police stations, four in our historical facilities, ten at our, uh, recreation centers, and eighteen at our public parks, and two at our splash pads and pools. Uh, for for councils', uh, frame of reference, those barriers could be anything from a crack in a sidewalk where it's elevated for somebody that can't pass in a wheelchair, all the way to a restroom, and there are several layers of barriers inside there. So, I wanted to aggregate that information at high level, uh, again, that data's in the back of the book, uh, that's been presented to council. Our next was the public buildings and spaces, and so in there, that is both going through all four priorities, which is your external accessibility, your internal, uh, accessibility, your signage and communications, and restrooms, uh, water fountains, and then, of course, your auditory devices and, uh, being able to help those with hearing disabilities. So, in the evaluation, we came up with fifteen barriers for our administrative buildings, uh, another four in our fire stations, and, uh, two in our historical facilities, four in our police stations, thirteen in recreation centers, eleven barriers at our parks, and and then two, again, at our our splash pads and pools. And and this is an array of different types of accessibility barriers, from the height of a sign to needing to redo an entire restroom like at Mazar Park, which is on on that list. And then finally, our pedestrian facilities and public rightaways, there's a lot of stuff in the city. So, there's over six hundred and fourteen, or there are six hundred and fourteen bus stops in the city, and two hundred and seventy-nine of those bus stops are currently ADA compliant, which is a pretty phenomenal number. Our curb ramps, there was two hundred and, or two thousand six hundred and thirty-five curb ramps evaluated across the municipality, and two thousand four hundred and seventy-one of those are ADA compliant currently, which does not leave a lot left to, uh, fix. And then, of course, our two hundred and seven miles of sidewalks were evaluated, and in that process, we identified two hundred and fifty-six different barriers of, uh, accessibility issues along those pathways. So, kind of changing, real quick, we'll shift to the survey. So, we kicked off our public participation in May and went into June with it. Uh, we administered a survey using our G I S, we got over three hundred responses from the public. We conducted three webinars, uh, which we had over twenty participants through those three webinars. We spoke to Cumberland County School System and gave a brief to their monthly PAC meeting, which is full of families that, uh, have disabled youth in those families. And so, that really helped them to understand what the city was working on. We also briefed Methodist University and some of their accessibility design programs that they have there, speaking to their professors, their administration, and their students, as well as a few community watch groups. This information was also distributed across the municipality to our our govern, our sister governments, and then, of course, our stakeholders in the community. So, in front of you, you have, uh, a word cloud, uh, this is a pretty simple way to look at what people gave in the feedback of that survey, which you can actually reference in the book on page forty-six, will give you all twenty-one questions we had there. But, the word cloud from the three qualitative responses. So, the first question we presented was, is there an area of the city you feel has great accessibility? Our number one response, as you can see, is downtown. And there were several other marks along there, but our parks have pretty good accessibility, as well as Festival Park and some of our recreation centers. The next, which requires a bit of a negative qualitative response, was asking if there was an area in the city that the residents felt had poor accessibility. The number one response was our roadways and our corridors. Uh, in addition to that, coming in second place was mention of sidewalks in our downtown area. Not just sidewalks in our downtown area, but sidewalks and our downtown area, correction. And then our third question was, do you have any other ADA accessibility concerns for the City of Fayetteville? The facilities, services, and programs. The number one response from our residents using that survey were the lack of sidewalks, uh, as well as the, uh, inaccessible design surrounding our major roads, thoroughfares, neighborhood thoroughfares, and our corridors. So, with all of that together, and this, uh, hundred and sixty-page transition plan that council has, uh, staff would like to make the recommendation that the City Council moves to adopt the transition plan as presented. Uh, you also have the option to reject that and provide further guidance to staff to to amend anything, uh, you you need us to. Pending your questions, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, sir, Councilmember Kinston, then Wright and Banks McLaughlin.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, I just had one question. In conversations with, um, one of my neighborhood watches, there was a concern about the roundabouts, um, itself. And so, that's why I support this, so that we can further investigate and find out how we can make that easier and more accessible. I don't know if that's possible, but that was definitely a concern for safety.
Absolutely, ma'am, uh, there were several, uh, we had a couple attendees during our public webinar process that brought up the roundabouts that were newly installed in the, um, uh, the neighborhood by Manic Church.
Yes, Montclair.
On the blank.
Montclair.
Montclair, yes, so the Montclair neighborhood has a series of three roundabouts. They're currently ADA compliant, but they lack one crucial thing that's important to that neighborhood, which is auditory devices. So, while there are, uh, signalized crossings in the area, there are pathways, the accessible design is 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 good. They do not have the auditory piece, and there are some, uh, blind residents in that community, and a few of the residents brought that up. So, we added that to our list, and we'll be talking in our action plan development when we start to take these and and remove them and fix the barriers. We'll be working with traffic services to see what options we have to rectify that issue.
On behalf of them, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Banks McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mayor, um, for the listening and viewing audience, can you explain the, um, how they can go onto the website and pinpoint the locations where it's ADA accessible?
Yes, ma'am, so our residents can go to FayettevilleNC.gov and you go underneath our community, the very first tab at the top left. And then you click on that, and you'll see ADA Transition Plan, or or they can go to, uh, FayettevilleNC.gov slash ADA. Both of those will take them to the website, and at the bottom of that webpage is an interactive ArcGIS map. This is a live map that we've created as staff that has all of the geographical geographic points in the city that were investigated and evaluated using, uh, the ADA Title Two. On that, when they click on that icon, it'll present whether that is ADA compliant, if it's not, what the issues are. Additionally, we added a link to click on a survey. So, if you're a resident in our mu, in our city, and you're out and about, you can go to our website on your cell phone, you can click on that survey, and you can submit a response of the ADA compliance issue you identified on the spot. And Yamil Nazar, uh, our ADA Title Two Coordinator, and myself both receive those messages. We'll look at the issue and quickly, uh, work with the resident to see what the fix could be.
Thank you, sir, all right, before I go to Councilmember Wright, I did have a question about, um, our swings at direct centers. I did run into, um, uh, the mother of a disabled child who says there's only one, uh, swing that she has to go all the way to the Gilmore Center. Do you have any plans as part of this, uh, compliance and improving ADA accessibility?
Yes, ma'am.
Related to those type things?
Yes, so e- every park, every playground, every route to those playgrounds, and every item on the playground, every apparatus, was evaluated using Title Two and some of the universal design components that have been administered by the federal government. Those have been identified for the lack of accessibility. The only one that currently has accessible swings is the Gilmore Recreation Center. However, if a resident brings that feedback, that's a special request, that's their area, they're inexpensive, and it's something that city staff could look at and ultimately discuss.
Why do we have to have the request, and we know we need to to do it, uh?
So, we're not required to have that, and we have some some other major issues, but if you tell us the location, sir, we can look at that.
Well, we got you. Uh, understood, thank you, uh, Councilmember Kinston, is your light old? Oh.
It's new.
Okay, all right, is it a motion? Okay.
It's just another question that I had.
You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, one other, um, it just reminded me when you mentioned that. What about the ADA accessible wheelchairs for the splash pads and for the pools? Is that something that we have available, or is it per case basis if someone needs it in the area?
So, I do not know the answer to that question, if we have the wheelchairs to issue out to residents if they request them, to be able to go on the splash pads. Uh, but I can collect that information, I'll reach out to Michael Gibson from Parks and Rec and find out what locations we have that, and I'll also put that on our ADA website so that residents know where they can get that, uh, where those are accessible points. I do know that all of our splash pads are compliant in accessibility, meaning if you have a wheelchair, you can get to it without having to jump over routes and curbs and things like that. Um, however, the However, the special wheelchairs that you would use in a wet playground, I have to come back with that answer, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. I just mentioned, thought about that for, you know, children with needs, so that they can enjoy those amenities as well. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, mayor. And I just, before I make my motion, wanted to commend the council and staff on these options and recommendations for handicapped accessibility or challenged citizens in our community, because, you know, it's very, very much needed, and I think that we're on the cutting edge. Things are really changing in our society, and to really put our challenged citizens up front and say, hey, you count too. And to make those things accessible, and the mayor brought up the swing issue, that's something that, you know, is a no-brainer. So, we need to make those things happen. I move to adopt the ADA transitional, transition plans as presented by the staff.
And councilman Wright, is motion by councilmember Wright to approve and adopt. This is second by councilmember Kinston. Any discussion on the motion? Not, council, I'll look to you for action. Councilmember Banks? Oh, oh, oh. So, Madam Clerk, for the record, councilmember Banks McGloughlin had pre-listed her second, so can you amend that to the right Banks McGloughlin motion? My apologies. So, happens after nine o'clock. All right. Councilmember Banks, you gonna vote? Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, well, so just, I? Just say, yeah. All right. Madam Clerk, is all unanimous? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, mayor and council.
Yes, sir. Item eleven point zero-two, authorization for the Homeless Day Center Emergency Shelter Property Acquisition and Approval for Design Contract. Mr. Colley, how you doing, sir?
Good evening, mayor and council. Chris Colley, Economic Community Development. So, before you, you have a request to do two things and move this project forward. We're gonna go through a quick presentation, but essentially, what staff is requesting is for council to give permission to the city manager to execute a final negotiations on the property and buy the property, and then for us to award a full design contract with an architect. Before we get into any of the details, everybody wants to see this, right? So, so, this is, this is the, this is the concept that we're looking at for renovations for 128 South King Street to be the Day Resource Center. We'll come back to that and look at that. I got one more picture, that's my favorite there as well, but everybody just wants to see that right now, so let's look at it. Architect did an incredible job. Staff had an amazing team that helped vet several sites to come up with this location. Architect looked at some pretty awesome concepts to mirror what we all recently saw at Oak City Cares. But, before we do that, let's get into it a little bit. So, first up, what is a Day Resource Center? What are we trying to accomplish here? So, this is, we want to create community capacity for when a storm happens, when some type of event happens, and we have to batten down the hatches, and people need a place to go. We have additional emergency shelter in the community. When it's not being used for that purpose, we'd still want to get our money's worth out of it, so we're looking to use it for a Day Resource Center, which is a multi-purpose facility designed to serve the needs of persons experiencing homelessness. The idea is to bring a lot of different community partners and service providers together to offer services in one location. We're not looking to recreate the will or overlap with other services. We're looking to take services that folks who are typically transportation disadvantaged and co-locate those in one location as a collaborative community effort. Just a quick reminder of the project timeline, since summer of 2019, things really started moving with this. The state reorganized under the North Carolina Office of Resilience and Recovery. In December of 2019, we signed an agreement for the grant funding. We went out for an architect. We selected an architect to do that initial site design and feasibility. We also engaged with Fountain Works to do some community engagement sessions with council. We had a couple of county commissioners, members of the public, community partners, and persons experiencing homelessness. We're all cued into that. And really, the idea was, what do you want to see in a Day Resource Center? What types of amenities could be offered? And based on the Oak City Cares model, we were looking at, what do people like, what do they not like, so on and so forth. So, with that information, the architect came back with a space plan. We've been working through that, and we've worked to negotiate the property and come to an option. We also had, we talked about in the last meeting, that INCOR has a lot of federal steps that they have to take that are gonna take a little while, and so we wanted to make sure that if anything were to move on this between now and when council gets back together, we don't lose a bit of time. So, that's what the approval tonight is all about. So, here's a picture of the interior. That's a very preliminary space plan, but nevertheless, this is what we've come up with. Anybody who's happened to have looked at the Oak City Cares may see that some of the, some of the design is very simple, very similar. The lobby and that welcoming area where the staff would work and kind of direct traffic into an intake portion. Offices for case management and services done by community partners, showers and a laundry facility, which are one of those requested items, a computer charging station, and just an area to use public computers for things like getting a social security card, a birth certificate, searching for a job, everything that requires a computer nowadays. And then, on the other side, we have the multi-purpose room and a warming kitchen. So, one of the things that we, that is really important here when we talk to the community was whether we needed to put the investment into a full commercial kitchen, and we found we had a lot of community partners that were willing to get out there and provide food to the homeless. What we need is kind of a place to coordinate all of those things, and so we recently learned at Oak City Cares the past couple of weeks, that they facilitate mills coming through their doors from community partners. Don't remember the frequency, but it was, it was pretty often. It's a big part of what they offer, and they don't actually do it, they channel those partnerships into place, and that's what we're looking at doing here as well. So, with that, that's the interior that we're looking at, the potential of designing. Here's a picture of the elevation and the exterior. We would be redoing the parking lot, adding some landscaping, adding windows throughout the whole front, frontage of the building, and putting a car park and just some outdoor areas, and overall, making this area something that this community ought to be proud of. Just one more picture of the exterior there, where you can kind of see where the loading and unloading area is. You see that there's mail, mailbox amenities. It's very, it's very outlined to have some outdoor area and for folks to be able to walk up and engage with the facility. So, if council does approve tonight, what happens next? INCOR is finalizing that environmental review that we talked about that takes a good while to get through. We are not concerned about that final. At this point, it is a matter of filing paperwork and the public comment and all the HUD federal steps that need to take place. If there were to be any type of issues environmentally found at this point, INCOR is confident that we can remediate those with little cost. So, if we did have to bring in some additional dirt to put on the site or something like that, that's not gonna be a deal killer. After this, Cliff Isaacs, our Director of Construction Management, is gonna work with the architect to complete full design. They will then put out the project for construction bids, and then the next time you'll see this project back is if you ask for any interim updates, but before the next council action, we'll be awarding the construction contracts after tonight. So, this gets us started and gets us down the road to getting some work done on this project. So, the staff ask is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to acquire the real property and to approve the award of and authorize the execution of the design contract with IBI Group, Inc.
That's it?
That's it.
Thanks, sir. Good-looking building. Go to councilmember Banks McGloughlin and Ingram.
If there aren't any questions, I would like to move to adopt the resolution. Y'all know I'm ready to. I'm like, look, no questions, let's get to it.
We had questions.
Yeah, questions, okay.
But I do want to say this before I do any, but I do want to thank our staff and thank council, because this is something that is needed and is giving those that are low-income, those are homeless, the opportunity to be given resources so that they can move to another level. So, thank you guys, and also Oak City for giving us a tour and giving us some ideas. And one of the things that they did mention that is very, very crucial as far as partnership. So, I hope that other organizations, the community, the county, faith-based community would jump on board to help make this successful.
And I'll come back to you. Councilmember Ingram, Kinston. And then, I think Wright has answered over.
So, in terms of accolades, I do want to thank Mr. Manager for the work he's put in for this. I think this, this kind of came about, about ten years ago, when he was probably not in that position, and he put it into, I think it was an emergency, emergency response plan that the city and the county did jointly, and that was one of the outcomes, so thank you for including that. But I did have a, have a few questions as far as timeline is concerned. When we are set to, when are we set to award the design contract? When are you gonna bring that back to us?
So, tonight is the two parts. So, one is adopt a resolution to purchase the property, and the second part is to award the design contract.
Okay, so we're, okay, two parts, good. So, then, ideally, from that timeframe, from then, when we do this, what is the ideal timeframe of completion? I'm not looking for dates, I'm just, you know, one, eight months, about how long are we looking?
So, I'm gonna talk fuzzy on the date part.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
So, so, we expect early 2022 to bring back construction bids, and then we expect about twelve months of construction from there.
Okay. Thank you. And when the time is ready, I'll second councilmember Banks McGloughlin's motion.
Okay. Before we go to councilmember Kinston, just clarify a little history here. This came about after the first hurricane, I think, Matthew, and we had worked with the county on emergency shelters and applied for the grant, and so it's been a long road, nevertheless, and a lot of hard work and dedication by senior staff, Mr. Hewitt and councils, current and past, so thank you. Councilmember Kinston, and then we'll go back to councilmember Banks McGloughlin.
Yes, thank you, mayor.
Oh, yeah, I thought you told me it was good. Kinston Wright, then Banks McGloughlin.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, mayor. So, I do have a question regarding the design. As things change, one of the things that I did look at earlier was with the design. So, there's a statement that says that the multi-purpose facility is designed to serve the needs of persons experiencing homelessness. And so, when I was looking at the design, one of the things, as a mother, that I did notice, is there's not a family room. And the need of a family room, because I remember, you know, just going out in public and taking my sons, that may have had to go to the restroom. Well, you may be in a situation where one son is too old to go into the women's restroom, but not old enough to go into the men's restroom. So, in looking at the shower area, or even a changing table, so in looking in the shower area, I just wanted to know if that had been considered for a family that may be in this situation where that they can go in and take care of their needs together and not be separated, you know, with showers and things like that?
No, ma'am, it hasn't. We haven't really got into deep design yet. This was, the architect did this as part of the, that early work of feasibility, just to make sure that we had a good idea of the square footage building or facility that we needed to have our eye on. But to that point, we did learn some pretty cool things from Oak City Cares, one of them being, they had, they had a family room that was really, really about trauma-informed child sensitivity, and, and that was really, really cool. And so, I'm expecting that as, as we get further into design and specifics here, IBI, who also designed that facility, is fully gonna bring those things forward. But to that point, I will make sure that that is a priority.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor.
Ma'am, councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make some comments concerning the Day Center. You know, it's been a long time coming, and since I've been on council since thirteen, you know, this has been on the front line of our conversation, and as you mentioned, when we got that grant, I sat on that committee with, it was a multi-committee with the commission, county commissioners and the city for the daycare, Day Center and the homeless. And so, I'm very elated and excited that we've come this far. Thank God we didn't lose that, that money, because there was a time limit on that, and of course, the city manager and staff has been very instrumental in keeping us aboard. But, like I say, it's been a long time coming. We need it in our city. We complain about homeless people standing around, you know, things of that nature. So, I'm glad that, you know, the council have really stepped up and the staff have been working together, and I just wanted to also mention, as we went to, to see the site on this week, or on last week, that I was very impressed that the county and the city worked together hand in hand to get that done, and also, there were some leaders in the community, community advocates and organizations, COC, and it was very, very enlightening, and I was, I was very impressed in how they worked together, the county and the city, to make this happen. So, and our people from the county was there as well, and it was a very successful meeting, and so I think that we're gonna have great success with this Day Center. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Councilmember Banks McGloughlin.
Thank you, mayor. I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to acquire the real property and approve award of the authorize of execution of the design contract with IBI Group Incorporated.
Motion by councilmember Banks McGloughlin, second by councilmember Ingram. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for action. Madam Clerk, is unanimous by those voting. Item eleven point zero-three, have members of the county here, Mr. Tracy Jackson and company, so if you all want to make your way up for this, I think you all are handling the presentation of the new resolution for animal control services. Good evening, y'all.
Good evening. Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. I'm Elaine Smith, I'm the Director of Cumberland County Animal Services, and I did not make a presentation for this. You were probably grateful due to the time of this evening, but what we did want to do was make ourselves available, because the county is in the process of updating and changing our animal ordinances, and as we are currently operating in a system where the city falls within and under the county ordinances as far as our enforcement measures, we wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of the changes that were being proposed and made. This is something that has already passed through the county commissioners. We did discuss this with the city attorney and the city manager to address any concerns they have, so we're basically just here to see if you all have any concerns or questions about the changes to the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, you would, and other members of council, I suspect that the burning question on your heart is related to whether roosters...
How'd you know?
Are allowed in the city? And that...
It's been a three-year conversation, hasn't it?
Yes, sir, and with this...
Let's hear about that.
With this proposed change adopted by the county, and that the county is asking us to adopt, roosters would be prohibited in the city.
Oh, my goodness. Well, I have some constituents that would certainly be happy to hear that. All right. Mayor Proton Jensen?
So, I'm gonna ask the question, I read, read over it, but I didn't say, are pigs allowed?
Pigs are not allowed.
And this will not change? Okay.
Not.
Can we just add...
We just wanted to put that for the record. Pigs are not allowed.
Pigs have been outlawed for a while now.
Yes, they have.
That remains, no pigs, hogs, or other swine are allowed.
Okay. Thank you.
That remains the same.
All right. Pepe, huh? All right, Councilmember Davis, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt the resolution making...
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt, uh, the resolution making the Cumberland County Animal Services Ordinance applicable within the city of Fayetteville.
There's a motion by Councilmember Davis, the second by Councilmember Wright. Uh, any further discussion on the motion? All right, all right, council, I'll look to you for action. Council, Councilmember Kinston. I cleared the board, I'm sorry. All right. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you all. Looking forward to it. When would the, the new ordinance be in effect?
July 1.
July 1. All right. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thanks for staying.
Item 11.04, selection of a redistricting consultant. I guess this is your item, Ms. McDonough?
Mr. Mayor and council, as was discussed at the agenda brief, you do have, uh, two, uh, firm proposals before you, I'm here to answer any questions that the council may have.
Do you have a couple of lights? Uh, Councilmember Kinston and then Ingram.
Um, actually, Mayor, I was ready to make a motion. So if you can come back to me.
All right, Councilmember Ingram.
Motion.
All right, so I don't know who, okay. All right, I'll come back to you all to first and, and second that. I did have, uh, a, as we were talking in the break, I think, uh, some discussion took place at, uh, at one of the briefings. And I'm not sure I was aware, but you had a total, uh, you had several RFPs come in. There was some, uh, discrepancy about, uh, the duties as of staff, which something this important, we wanted to keep it at arms length, uh, from that. But then we came back with these two that are attached to it. One in which I think gives us a flat fee, uh, for their services. The other gives a hourly fee. So the hourly fee doesn't have a cap, so what happens if it, because theoretically if it's enough hours, they could exceed all of them really, right?
I think, uh, Mayor, uh, they provided an estimate, but certainly if the council were inclined to, uh, go with the firm, uh, the, the council could set a, uh, cap or a not to exceed amount, uh, for that firm.
All right, council, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Jensen, you have a question?
I do, I do. Thank you. I was, um, out of the two that we are to pick from, do we have any historical, um, data of what they have done, any redistricting in North Carolina cities before?
I'm not aware of the, let me, I'm sorry, let me start again. The LS group, uh, L, LRS group, uh, is, it appears to be a newly formed group. But within that group, uh, that group is comprised of members of two different firms. And, uh, uh, one of those firms is Tharrington and Smith, uh, which helped us with our previous, uh, redistricting, effort in, uh, 2010. That was, uh, Attorney Deborah, uh, Stanger. Uh, we have also, uh, with both groups, uh, they have done work for the city in other capacities. So we're familiar with, uh, most of the attorneys that are involved for, for either group. I do know that, um, as of right now, because again, the, uh, LRS group appears to be a newly formed group. But I do know that both of these groups, uh, have a number of municipal clients that they're working with across the state that find themselves having, uh, similarly situated as the city of Fayetteville.
Thank you.
All right, uh, did you have any questions? Okay, Councilmember Kinston and then Ingram.
Yes, Mayor. So I would like to make a motion for the, um, the redistricting consultant for Parker Poe and InFocus with the setting a, um, their estimate cost was between 15 and 25K for their services. But I would like to increase the 25 to 20, well, actually, put, to put a cap on it of the 26K for services for the city of Fayetteville.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion by Councilmember Kinston, seconded by Councilmember Ingram to approve, uh, the Parker Poe, uh, contract with a cap of 26,000. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Kinston, you have a discussion?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So in looking at the information, um, that was provided, um, I did select this particular, um, consultant. One of the things in looking at the, um, understanding the importance of the ver, the verances and then realizing that, you know, for our citizens, it is, you know, one vote, um, one person, one vote to make sure that we're looking at the information. I know I was the one that initially brought the council member request, um, because of the importance of this, um, process that has to occur, um, not having any contact with either one of the, um, the potential, uh, consultants that we're looking at. I felt like this one would best serve the city of Fayetteville and our residents. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, I did have some questions about this and I'm familiar with Parker Poe. We've used them for other, uh, areas of litigation. What's their expertise in redistricting?
Mayor, I, the only information I have is what, what was submitted, uh, for either group.
So, so you don't know if they had a, a specific, um, division or some, something that handles? I was just interested as to how, so any law firm I guess can handle this because they do it by law. But I guess the Tharrington team or, or just in comparison, somebody, some firms specialize in this, right?
There are, I wouldn't say firms, but individuals within the firm that, uh, that specialize in this. Um, and also what you see with both responses is that you need to have, uh, a demographer, demographer, uh, as a part of the team. And so it looks like, uh, both groups have that.
Okay. All right, so it's a motion on the floor. Any other discussion? Uh, Councilman Wright?
So, State Attorney, uh, the other group, um, I know, you know, the mayor asked a question about the expertise in this area because it's so sensitive and it's probably, probably be one of the most important votes that we make, uh, on council in our tenure. This other group, um, I know you mentioned last week about their, uh, experience with, um, I guess rezoning. Can you talk to us a little bit about, about redistricting? Can you say something about their experience?
As I, uh, just responded, the group appears to be, uh, one that involves a number of different, uh, persons from two different, uh, law firms. The only thing again that I know about this group is that the group does include Ms. Attorney Deborah, uh, Stanger with Tharrington and Smith, who did help the city council with their redistricting effort in, uh, 2010 when we were required to redistrict, uh, as a result of the census at that time.
Okay, so she's very familiar, even though in 2010 it's been about 12 years. But she is familiar with the city of Fayetteville and what, and the redistricting. Okay, so, yeah, thank you.
All right, I think that is, all the questions have a motion on the floor. We've had discussion. Council, I'll look to you for your vote for the Kinston, uh, Ingram motion, which is to select Parker Poe with the caps as mentioned. Look to you for your vote. All right, can you press your light? Uh, it's still, still not working. All right. Y'all got to make sure y'all get Councilmember Banks straightened out with her green light. So I know the day is retiring tonight, so make sure we got some good, good buttons, huh? All right, uh, that motion fails three to five. Those voting in favor, councilmembers Banks, McLaughlin, Ingram and Kinston, those voting, uh, in opposed. Davis, Wright, Colvin, Jensen, Hair. All right, uh, Councilman Wright?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make that motion that we would consider, uh, the LRS group as, uh, is that the proper name that you, okay? That they would be the group for registering?
There's a motion by Councilmember Wright, there's a second by Councilmember Hair. Any discussion on that motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for action. Green, okay. All right, Madam Kirk, motion carries, uh, six to two. Those voting in favor, Councilmember Davis, Banks, McLaughlin, Wright, Colvin, Jensen and Hair. Those voting in opposed, councilmembers Ingram and Kinston. All right, uh, item 11.05, uh, I think Councilmember Wright, is there an add-on?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, um, this was an add-on and what I wanted to do was make a motion to, uh, give the city manager direction to move forward with the placing of a building which would, um, be used as a center and an upgrade for the Mabel Smith Park. Because we don't have the numbers at this point, we want to bring back, um, to our next work session, a budget for a layout for additional improvements for the park. That would, you know, include the parts of, um, for the five, for the 1.5, for the site. When, when is our next session? That would be not the first, but the second August, the second Monday in August? Or the first Monday of the work session? Um, to, now, what I'm making the motion for is to move forward to, uh, direct the city manager to move forward with, um, the plans for the center, for the Mabel Smith Park and to bring back those numbers, um, to us that we will understand what those numbers are and the improvements that our city staff has in mind for the park.
All right, is there a motion by Councilmember Wright? Councilmember Kinston, is that a second or a question?
That's a question, sir.
All right, I'll be right back. So is there a motion on the floor to, uh, as stated by Councilmember Wright? Is that a second?
No, that's a question.
Okay, I'm coming to questions. So is there a second to the motion to, uh, presented by Councilmember Wright? All right, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Jensen, discussion phase, councilmembers Kinston and Ingram.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I do want to make sure that I understand that after the work session that we had, to my understanding, that there was going to be a motion to go ahead and approve? So is that changed? Cause I ju, I just want to make sure.
Well, it, it's had, it's not changed. Uh, what we are proving is to going forward with the center. But because we don't have the numbers, after talking to staff and some council, that we need to have the numbers, what it's going to cost prior to the, the actual final vote. But the vote, to put, to put the center going forward, that's going to be approved tonight.
Okay, so it's just the cost factor that you're waiting on? Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Ingram. All right, council, any other discussion? All right, we'll look to you for your action. Councilmember Banks. All right, uh, Madam Kirk, motion carries six to two. Those voting in favor. Councilmembers, uh, Banks, McLaughlin, Wright, Colvin, Jensen, Hair and Kinston, those voting opposed. Councilmembers Ingram and Davis. Motion to adjourn? Oh, Mr., oh, Mr. Manager. Was there another item?
I can, if I, if I may, since this is the last night that this diocese is going to be used in this room, I think that all of us, if somebody would take a picture of all of us sitting here, I think we would lose a moment not having that and city manager. And, I mean, everybody needs to stay in their, this little bit of history in the making right here.
Well, if we could, I would, um, ask if, if you don't mind to get some of the set staff as well to come up as well, so at the end.
Absolutely.
Okay, and that would be nice because this has been historic.
Can you give your briefing, uh, your brief briefing while they're making their way here?
Well, no, because I don't want to interrupt that, but just one second, Mayor, I'll catch you. So I wanted to commend council that tonight has been his, I think, historic in a lot of ways. This is the last meeting of your fiscal year. But just to cap, uh, cap off what you've done tonight, you just took care of a redistricting item that you haven't had to deal with in 10 years. You've also now committed money for the Mabel Smith Park. Also earlier, you appropriated $20 million in ARPA funds for COVID relief. And you also allowed us to hire a consultant, um, parametrics to help us utilize that money most appropriately. You also appropriated $4.7 million in FTA grants, grant funds, which again, as Randy talked about, is six new buses. You also heard that you're getting five electric buses. You adopted an affordable housing plan. I mean, just pause for a moment. You adopted an affordable housing plan tonight. You've also continued to support for the residents of Locks Creek by looking at the map revision for the Lomar. Let's see, you also approved another Parks and Recreation Bond project by putting lights on eight fields at George Saka Complex. You approved that, um, you also approved the ADA transition plan. This goes back to probably 10 years or more that you've done that tonight. And you also, as Mr. Wright and others talked about, including Councilmember Banks, McLaughlin, you've given us the authority to move forward with the homeless day center and we've announced that publicly tonight. And you've done that in under two and a half hours, 40 items. That is a lot of work, but it is also a lot of work that council put into being prepared tonight. But also I'd like to say again, uh, thank you for your recognition of staff on these projects because they worked very hard to bring all of those to you tonight. So thank you, Mayor.
So we're going to sit, we're going to sit down? So move, sir. So move.